Are we ready? Thank you. So, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Council Policy and Procedures Committee. This meeting is called to order at 2:01 PM. And this meeting is being conducted with a virtual component. Anyone who's here in person, be sure to fill out a blue card if you want to make a comment on an item. If you are joining us online and using Zoom, the webinar ID is 847-5493-3805. If you are calling via phone, the phone number is 669-900-9128. And again, the webinar ID is 847-5493-3805. When the chair announces an item on which wish, which you wish to speak, try that again. Click the raise hand feature in Zoom or dial star nine on your phone. And when the chair calls your name to provide public comment, if you are participating via phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. We will go to the first formal item, roll call. And the deputy city manager could take attendance. That'd be great. Committee member Hicks. Committee member Ramirez. And Chair Mascherano. Thank you. Next item is approval of minutes, and this is the minutes from December 15th, 2022. Does any member of the committee have comments or corrections on this? Nope, there's no one here in person. Is there anyone virtual?
There is one person virtual with no comments.
Okay. Great. So if there's no comments on this.
Second.
Roll call vote or can we just do show hands? Yes, we can do roll call if you prefer. Okay, so committee member Hicks.
Yes.
Committee member Ramirez.
Yes.
And Chair Mascherano. Yes. Thank you. Yep, unanimously. Okay, next item is oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the committee on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the committee from acting on non-agenda items. There is still no one here in person, and we have one person, or we have virtual, so. You have one raising your hand?
Bruce England. Mr. England.
Yes, thank you. I assume you hear me. Yeah, Bruce England, Wisman Station Drive. I just actually have a question. I know normally you don't entertain questions, but I'll put it out there anyway. At the last council meeting, when you got to the consent calendar, a question was raised by the mayor. And this is actually something that was raised by some of our community members too in discussion. We weren't really sure about whether a community member can quote unquote pull an item or whether we just asked, or we mentioned that we wanted to comment on a consent calendar item, but it actually has to be pulled by vote from city council. That doesn't, that doesn't sound right to me. But I just wonder what the procedure is. I think we would all benefit from knowing what it really is.
Okay. Is there anyone else? There's no other comments? You know, I will just say, Bruce, maybe we can clarify that at the next council meeting. I think I know the answer, but I want the official word. Okay, moving on to item 5.1, which is propose amendments to call it council policy A dash six. So I think I'm gonna take the lead on doing my background on this. So this is a referral from the council to clarify the policy regarding election of mayor and vice mayor. We have discovered that the current policy was not as clear as many of us thought it was. And so before it's used again, we thought we should clarify it. So as Chair of this committee, I worked with the city attorney's office and the city clerk's office to come up with the current draft. And we certainly had a robust discussion about the parts that were not clear, especially when you start getting into scenarios. And I would say we analyzed a lot of different scenarios. But you know, there's probably others that we missed, and actually I've thought of one even today. But I think it was a great team effort and what we tried to do is clarify our interpretation of the current policy as opposed to change it. Of course, there can be different interpretations of the current policy, and so that's why we're here to discuss it. If somebody has a different interpretation, please let us know. But I think it's useful to sort of stress test this to make sure we've covered all the bases. The city clerk did collect policies from other cities. And my conclusion based upon looking at all those was there is no one procedure or practice that cities use. Different jurisdictions, you know, treat this differently. You know, sometimes they have a directly elected mayor, you know, they don't necessarily have a formal rotation. And so I came away from reading all of those with, well, we can do whatever we want to do because there is no consistent policy. The one thing though, we did notice in a lot of the policies was a lot of them had prescribed seating arrangements for the dais, which we never had. So we drafted one and put it in here loosely based upon what I've observed. But again, that's another area open for discussion. We, we felt like it's always easier to respond to something than to start from scratch. So that's why we put one in here. So what I suggest we do is we'll have committee questions, then we'll open it up for public comment. And then we will get back to the draft and we have the version that was posted online with, that is a redline version. The city attorney's office and I thought of yet another clarification, and we made that change in a draft that was handed out. It's very minor and I'll go through that. But then I think we should also discuss, is there anything else, you know, and stress test this for different scenarios? Because you all probably have different ones than we came up with. Okay, so let's start with questions from the committee. Are there any?
So, so I first, I think I can guess, but I'm, you know, I'm a slow reader, I think. So can you tell me the, I can guess from kind of reading this in the last couple of minutes. But what were the reasons for you making this change? Just so I'm clear.
The one in yellow?
Yes.
The ones in yellow. So the changes we made that are in yellow, we moved a sentence that is so for public information here, the, let's see, it would be two E. We moved the last sentence because it felt like more of a definition and we put it under the definitions in the last paragraph. And then in the paragraph, the highest ranking member, we tweaked that a little bit to make it clear that it's the day that you are sworn in as opposed to the day you were elected or appointed sets the start of your term.
And then my second question is why, so for me, when I read this, seniority, seniority and rank seem to be in the opposite. The definitions seem to be the opposite of what I would expect. I would think, because rank, tell me if I'm reading it wrong. Rank seems to mean how long you've been there or how senior you are. And seniority seems to mean how long you've been there plus your rank in the election. So I would flip the, I would flip the words. I would say the senior member is the one who's been there the longest and the highest ranking is the one who's been there the longest plus your rank in the election. I don't understand why it's.
I think I can provide some clarification there. So what you're describing in terms of your placement in the election refers solely to a tie breaking provision if two members have to be of equal rank in terms of years of service on a council or actually consecutive days of service is the actual formula right now. So effectively, you would not have two senior members. You would only have one member because one member has to have had a higher number of votes than the other, if there is ever a tie. So that, to clarify that point. And right now, the current draft that you have before you does not actually use senior. It's essentially a reserved term. It uses highest ranking. The reason for that is in most parliamentary bodies, senior refers to either the age of the member. For example, in the US Senate, the senior member in the Senate is the eldest member. And as a common courtesy, the body allows that person to sit at the dais when the majority member is out of the chamber. So, but that has no effect on the rank of that member within the body in terms of where they sit on a committee. Do they head, you know, do they, do they head the body, for example? So that is why that term is currently reserved. It is eligible for use if you need it for another purpose in the future.
So I think part of what I'm hearing is that the way you've defined these words correlates with the way they're defined with other bodies besides our city.
Yes, we're trying to bring it closer to other bodies so that the terminology works.
That's good. It sounds inconsistent with my own reading. But okay, that's a good enough, a good enough reason, I guess. Okay.
I'm not sure we want to call out who's the oldest.
To clarify. To clarify for the mayor and the chair, the term senior can also be used, some bodies use it not to refer to age, but also just the number who's been there for the most number of years, but without consecutive service. And in the current draft rules, consecutive service is what determines rank order. So you could reserve the term seniority to refer to the person who's been on the council the longest in a non cumulative fashion.
So can I, does that, so I'm, we could go back and forth with questions. I don't want to ask all the questions in a row. But so consecutive, I can say, now I'm starting to test it with different cases. So by consecutive, Lisa would rank above Pat because Pat took a break. Is that true? Okay, just want to make sure I understood. Okay. Okay, other people can ask questions and I'll.
And my other people.
Yes.
So I think I'll ask, this might be, hopefully this will be easy. But you've made clear this is an interpretation of the existing policy. And it might be helpful for all of us to make sure we're on the same page about the interpretation. So can you walk through or staff or whomever? How, where you identified ambiguities in the existing policy and then interpreted them and how they align with or do not align with how we've practiced the policy, especially given the most recent instance where we had an ambiguity about who would be next in line.
So unless the chair would like to proceed first, I think this came up most prominently in the selection of the highest ranking member who is not mayor or vice mayor. Because the prior draft or the prior rules effectively had a situation where you had three council members who were elected in the same year and then had two, two consecutive elections. Potentially all three would be eligible as the highest ranking number. And so the tie breaking provision where you have consecutive years of service combined with the highest vote count in the election is meant to ensure that there can only be one person who ranks as the highest ranking number. Does that hopefully answer one part of your question?
Yes.
Okay, can you please remind me what the second part of your question was?
To the extent this aligns with or deviates from how we've practiced the policy, especially in the most recent selection process where there was an ambiguity.
I see. Okay, so to clarify that part, in what we effectively did with these edits is bring two components that were actually separated. Because there actually was a component in the rules that had highest number of ballots cast for that individual as a tie breaking provision. But there was a strange gap because it didn't always apply in every instance. So this closes that gap. You should never have another tie situation. There can only be one individual who will become highest ranking number.
The previous way it was written also had a lot of terminology about current term and length of that term, and if you were in the first part of a term and the second part of a term. And it got very confusing. And I think some people also kind of forgot what the policy actually said, which caused some confusion. And when they went back and read it, or they didn't also like maybe notice certain elements in it. And so we were trying to make this entirely clear. Although, you know, who knows if we really have? And get away from the things that were ambiguous or could be ambiguous, like terms. Now it's specified as the number of days that you have served. So then you don't have to figure out, am I in the first term or the second term of my time on council, which is what the old policy talked about.
Can you tell me what number of days, how that helps? Does that only help if somebody comes in as a two-year person? Which I've seen several times since I've lived in Mountain View. Nick Gallioto took over, was elected to a two-year term. And then Emily's been appointed to a two-year term. Is that when it comes into play? We're not talking leap years.
So I can perhaps clarify because I came up with these. So the reason for that is days essentially guarantee that in the vast majority of instances, you won't ever need the tie breaking provision at all. Because if you have the rare occurrence of two individuals who are appointed close in time or elected at a special election close in time, the days effectively give you a clear cut answer as to who is the highest ranking number.
So it's mostly appointed close together because elected, we're always elected on the same day.
Gallioto's is an interesting case because I think technically he was sworn in. There was, there was a regular election, wasn't there?
Yeah.
And so the people who won the regular election were sworn in at the conventional time. And I thought Gallioto was sworn in earlier, and that was the justification for him becoming vice mayor instead of, well, Greg Perry, right? Am I getting this history right?
I think people know that history.
Okay.
Perry was difficult to work with.
There was a technical justification, and I thought it was like Gallioto technically was sworn in early. Like, I could be wrong.
I didn't think he was, but I'm getting back to this.
To further elaborate on the answer, Mayor, the reason why days are also more valuable is that if you can foresee a situation where there are going to be one or more mid-cycle either appointments or special elections, you can plan ahead and ensure that they are not on the same day, right? Because that effectively removes the tie, the tie breaking aspect, right? Because so long as, even if it's just a matter of one day, you've avoided the issue altogether in the future. So it allows for the council to have more control of its own planning.
Yeah, I think a lot of people were also confused about that, as I was saying, for the first term and the second term. And if you had a break between your terms, was the next time you were here, your second term? If you had already served a first term, even though you took a break? And it, and so consecutive days, I appreciate you coming up with that because that makes it much more clear what we're talking about. Yeah.
So do we have any, have you been through any scenarios in which people who are appointed, rank higher? I can't really think of this, but rank higher than people who are elected. I don't mean appointed and then go through an election. Like, how does that? Have you been through scenarios with appointees?
So not personally in terms of actual happening, but we did talk about some scenarios. And I think that's worth discussing to make sure what's in here is what we want. Yeah, I feel like while we tried to document our interpretation of this, I think this, this committee can also say, well, you know what, we want to suggest something else if we want to do that.
I mean, I would like to make sure that anybody who becomes mayor has been through at least one election. Now we could have some disaster where something happens and we have a lot of appointees and that doesn't happen. But, you know, barring that, that's what I would like to make sure. And I think this does, but I don't, I haven't thought of it.
It doesn't, it does. Okay, so give me an example. Sounds like you've thought of it. Well, yeah, so it, it could be according to this policy that somebody who's appointed, if they're sort of next in line, could be vice mayor and then mayor without ever going through an election. Because, because you don't need to be.
First year or something.
If they're appointed, say, for two years and they are appointed or elected as the vice mayor. And then the vice mayor is then the mayor. That could happen.
But why would they be appointed as the vice mayor as opposed to someone else?
And because they would be the person who hasn't been that yet on the council. I tell you, this got incredibly complicated. So that's why I was saying, we should definitely discuss this. Because scenarios like that, that's one of the ones that I thought of after the fact. That I thought, oh, now wait a minute, that could happen. It's not to say that it would, but it could.
Yeah, because I would prefer that somebody who never got any votes not, you know, have to run through. Usually it's for two years, but there could be a scenario where somebody like several months in, something happens to them and someone was appointed. They're there for a fairly long time.
Yeah, so why don't we get back to that when we talk about changes we might want to make? Any other questions?
I'm sort of running through scenarios now. You've introduced the concept. I don't think I have any other questions right now.
Okay, then we'll open it up for a public comment. We don't have anybody here in person. Are there any hands raised online? Okay, there's no hand raised online, so we can come back to us for scenarios and discussion.
So I have one fairly simple comment.
Yes.
Which is that the seating arrangement, which I think is fine and looks like kind of what we're doing. But am I, am I confused? Is it the opposite of the way we're seated right now? Right, so, but it's, it's close to it, except it's, I mean, the past mayor, mayor and vice mayor are the same. But the, all these, those four senior people are a little flipped, right? So my only request is that we, if we, I'm fine with this, but that we don't change in the middle of this year, that we keep it the way we are.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, let's leave it as it is.
That's my only comment on that one.
Chair, so the reason why the way, the seating is the way it is now is it's frankly just because, remember, we had that empty seat there at the end. And so normally I think it would have been similar to this, but it was because council member Mattacek had already moved over closer to sit by the vice mayor. So we had that open seat beside the city attorney. And so that's how that happened, how it all shifted over. But yeah, I think absolutely you all want to make sure that this does not take effect until the next, 2024. That's what I would like, the seating at least.
Yeah, the seating at least, yes.
Yeah, and you know, we have had different, you know, I thought back from my years on council. And it has varied a little bit from year to year. But this was similar to at least one other city. And I thought, well, that was probably the closest that I could see from the examples that our city clerk found to what we kind of do. But again, you know, there's no set rule on this one.
Mayor, just to quickly announce, I think, the requested changes. It's actually going to be, it's going to be part of the rules that the seating chart as displayed will take effect at the first meeting in January 2024.
The first meeting or after? That's, I mean, that's fine.
That would be the second.
The second meeting. And reorganization. Okay, yes.
Chair, so I would just say this is really clean for you all because I think every year a new mayor is kind of trying to figure out with the city clerk or with myself or the city attorney. You know, we've gone through that, who do I put where, what do I do? And this frankly takes some of the pressure off of the new mayor of how the seating should go. So, and this is very similar to what I have seen done in other agencies as well. So this, this just makes it a lot cleaner and easier, I think, for any incoming mayor.
There's one city that I'm familiar with where they ask everyone where they want to sit based upon their seniority or seniority. Yeah, and I thought, oh, that's interesting. Yeah, so I thought, let's.
I can only imagine how that might play out.
So maybe we should go through this. And if you have comments or suggestions, you know, maybe we can just go page by page. It's kind of what I was thinking. So, you know, we added that we put a seating arrangement in here. And we added the definition section is all new. And that's because we felt like it wasn't really clear. And we've added in some ways new concepts versus what was in here before. So it defines highest ranking, seniority, and basically why those are important. I didn't have any changes to this.
The only caveat, well, I wouldn't change anything based on the existing charter. But the charter could change and that could affect our ability to have council members able to serve for 10 consecutive years. So it may, it may become moot depending on where the charter modernization comes up. But, but as, I think this is fine as drafted. But but as I think, this is fine as drafted.
Yeah, I was comfortable with this part. Then um on uh. Second page. Um, I thought it was interesting that the section of the city charter changed.
Really?
I'm like, oh, my goodness. Was it not correct in the policy? Um. And this kind of clarified, if you go through A, B and C, what we currently do. We have always done um. The mayor first and then the vice mayor. We haven't done them jointly, so that clarifies that. Um, we, you know, open the floor for nominations. Section D is one where, as I went through this, I thought, hmm. Um. This is not necessarily what we do, but this is what the policy said. So. I was thinking maybe what we want to do here is um specify. More closely to what we do. And something to the effect of if there's only one nomination, um we will vote. Using, and I don't know what you call it, our um the electronic voting system. Um, but if there's more than one nomination. I would suggest um that we do what we've been doing recently where we write the names down and we give them to the city clerk. Um, so that it's still a secret ballot, so to speak. Just like it is when you use the electronic system, unless you're looking at your neighbors and seeing what they're doing. Um, but um, you know, it just makes it, I think, more fair. Um, to have it like that. And so I would suggest we change this. To have it more closely aligned to that. And I will quickly add, though, that, you know, this is um. Well, actually, let me take that back. It's only the informal rotation that is the one that the council can do whatever they want to do. Or can we do whatever we want to do, even with the others that are not informal, so to speak?
Outside of the city attorney, I would say that the council can always determine it wants to do something different than what it has written in a policy.
Right.
Okay.
It's not a legal matter.
Right, just.
Okay.
The council can always select. Its own um. Some composition of mayor, vice mayor. Uh, seniority amongst members or ranking amongst members.
And also process we use to, okay, so I think, you know, lately we have been specifying. What the procedure should be for voting um in updates to council policies. So when I read this, our current one doesn't really say that. But I thought maybe if we wanted to, we could here. Make it more consistent with our others, but you two are looking at me like.
Well, so I I have totally ridiculous process questions, if that's okay. So. The the first is just to clarify, for us to take any action, we have to. Ha make a motion in the conventional way. So we could have this informal process. And then once we find out there's majority support for a given applicant, then somebody would have to move and somebody would have to second. That that the person who has. Who has demonstrated the greatest amount of support would become the mayor or vice mayor. Right? That would be the technical action that we would have to take in order for that person to move into a leadership role.
So we have to make a motion, but what we've typically done is not everybody talks. Somebody will just say, I nominate.
Right.
So and so.
That's okay.
Yeah, I, and that's what I thought maybe we want to change it to because that's not what this says.
I, so I think I think that's okay, right? So it's just. At the conclusion of whatever process we determine. You, that person doesn't move into a leadership role until somebody, until a council member moves and somebody seconds a motion to place that person into a leadership role.
Um, was, when somebody moves, but I don't think it requires a second. Is that correct? Um, if I remember this correctly.
So. I I think I'm not quite fully uh grasping the the logistics that are desired. I'm gonna start there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because from my understanding, the the objective was that.
Oh, maybe do do a second.
Right, so but my understanding is that uh you would like it so that. Influence uh as to what other council members think does not impact each individual council members' first choice in vote.
I think when it comes to actual voting, so if we back up and talked about nomination first. Um, what we tend to do now is just somebody will nominate somebody and somebody will second it. And then we'll say, are there any other nominations? And typically there's not. Um, and then we just take a vote using the electronic system. So what um I was concerned about is if there is more than one nomination. That um you wouldn't want to uh do, for example, a roll call vote. Because then it does influence potentially somebody's vote. And so we've been doing votes now by. Writing down things and passing them to the city clerk and then she tallies the votes.
As long as the the public is ultimately made aware of. Uh, what the votes were.
Yeah.
Uh, there's no, there's no procedural limitation on that.
Yeah.
But what I'm, I I think what I'm taking away from this is that. Uh, you have a few different options that could be, if you wanted to put into the rules, uh the first simply that. For the first nomination stage, each council member writes down. There if there's, if they want to make nominations. And the nominations could then, right, so they would submit the nomination secretly and the nominations would then be. Placed on the, on the digital readout so that everyone can see who was nominated. And then essentially a straw poll would be done where each council member would write down their first choice. That could then be submitted to the clerk, results posted up. And then the motion could be made. Because if six out of seven council members all have the same individual as their first choice, then I think that's a fairly easy motion. Um, on the other hand, if there are five or six different nominees, then maybe. That's where the process would break down in either situation. Where it's not going to be easy to make the motion, no matter, no matter which method you use.
I have a question on that. Maybe I'm not understanding what you've said, but. I don't want a situation where s- where seven people are. Kind of forced to make nominations and then it gets more complicated than it needs to be.
Okay, so uh. Ideally, one or two nominations, is that?
So I guess.
I think we work better when there's been one nomination. A- and that it largely, I mean largely what we're doing is rotating. I don't have to say that. That's what this says. We're rotating according to a process that. To some degree ensures that people have some experience before they step into the role. And I think that helps us. I mean, I think this is why there's the informal. Uh, whatever it's called here, the the informal rotation. Because in the past, from what what I've heard, there was not, like decades passed. And it caused sort of bitter feelings, it was way before my time, but. Bitter feelings between people as they were working together and maybe not, you know, not doing and. Maybe not doing that rotation as well. So. I think, I think that I also think that this informal rotation is respectful to voters. Because, you know. You're not elected unless you get a lot of votes and you represent, you know, different members of the community and. So everybody who's voted kind of gets the representation to some degree, not that the mayor, I mean. Our mayor doesn't have that much power above everyone else on council. You still need four votes, but I think it's a pretty. Fair process that gives, that makes our work more cohesive. So I wouldn't want, I don't want to also, I will be overseeing the next process and I don't want five different nominees.
Well, it sounds like the the issue really is, do you vote? Do you, do you say the motion's on the floor? Do you vote, right? You're saying if someone is nominated. A council member and someone has seconded, the issue becomes if there's another nomination. Which we haven't had for many years because of the rotation cycle and people have respected that. But there could be a potential in the future for that to change. But I think the policy that you all or the the practice process that you all have outlined. Would dictate who even gets nominated, should you follow that process? So if you aren't going to follow the process at all, and let's say it's. You know, something that is like a totally divided council or an election is bad or whatever and. No one wants whoever should be in line to be mayor next to be mayor or vice mayor. Then it could totally change. You can nominate, you know, two people from the floor, three people. I'd say that would be far less likely. The most likely scenario would be two people. And it would probably be the person who would be in line pursuant to this policy. Or a challenger or someone else that I would imagine had um. There would be some knowledge beforehand that, you know, there would be some desire for a change.
Be some reason for it.
That's right, that's right. Or at least. And with a brown act, within a brown act, people would know that something was happening. So I I think that. Um, it really is about whether you're going to vote on that motion or not is what I'm hearing. Right?
Well, I think we vote on it. I just think the process for voting on it is. From my perspective, what needs to be clarified because our previous policy didn't line up with what we actually have been doing. Heather.
Yeah, I was, I'm just, just in listening to to everyone's comments, um. Would it work for, for you guys to? Add in here that if the informal rotation is is being followed. That a a motion and a second, that the ceremonial type that you have now where someone, you know, is. Kind of talks about why they think this person, right? And then you vote, right? When there's only, when you're gonna follow what's here.
Mm hmm.
And in the case that you're not gonna follow what's here, a caveat that says that we would follow the the. Prescribed practice that we've been utilizing for your appointment process and boards and commissions and committees. And we kind of lay that up. Where you could have nominations and then that could go. As, you know, that could go as sideways as it might go, but you'll have something in writing that kind of outlines how that would work.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd be okay with that.
I I wouldn't, so I'm I'm comfortable with that. Uh, the 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 clarification I would make is that it would take a majority vote of the council to not follow the prescribed pop process. So it's very clear. We are electing not to follow the process. That requires majority support. Otherwise you default into the, yeah.
That's a good point.
So that would actually be the initial motion that.
Yes.
Either follow or not follow.
You just follow the process until somebody says, I move to not follow the process. And then that's when you know that you're gonna have a long evening.
Now I'd imagine you'd know in advance.
I would like briefly return to one of the mayor's items, which is to add in a qualifier that. The mayor and vice mayor be elected.
So I think that comes later.
Okay.
Yes. Oh.
Well, I I only brought it up now because it would actually affect. Uh, the timing of sometimes you're going to end up in a situation where neither. Uh, but there's no one eligible to be mayor or vice mayor potentially. Right? If if you're following the rotation sequence.
Yeah, I was thinking about that today. Yeah. So um if we want to jump to that. Where's where are my notes going? This looks like a new version of this. My notes are on a different version. Um. Yeah. Um. When it says like the informal rotation um on B, the vice mayor succeeds. To the mayor's position. So. And that um the, it says here that the mayor has to have had at least one year. On the council. Um. I'm not sure how to massage this, but I tend to agree with um the mayor. That I I think it's important that both the mayor and the vice mayor be people who have been elected at some point. Whether it be currently or in the past. So I could see where if you had an appointment that was a previously. Elected. Similar to the applicants we had this time for the appointment, some of them have previously been elected. I'd be okay with them taking that position because they have been elected. Um, but not somebody who has not been through an election. Is that what you're saying? Would you feel comfortable if it was somebody?
That's what I'd say. I was asking a question rather than saying something, but I would agree with that. I mean, I I think I've. I mean, what I've found out through the last appointment pro- process is that. Appointments are fairly common, you know, other cities do them. It's not like we did some odd thing. Um, but that many members of the community have strong feelings about having people who are elected. Um, you know, in office and I think particularly as mayor and vice mayor. So yeah, I think that probably makes sense. And appointees have an opportunity to run. It's not like they're barred from being.
Right.
Mayor or vice mayor.
Right. Because that could potentially. Um, a- and I guess I would add that. There could be a scenario, like I said, I was thinking lots of scenarios lately where. Um. The person that would. According to this process. Become mayor, well, actually, the first thing has to be vice mayor. But if they were. If we didn't put that in, you could have a vice mayor who hadn't been through an election, if they didn't get elected. And you had, you've already been through everyone else on the council. You would want an incoming person potentially to be. See the look on your face. We did this a lot. Yeah. Um, next in rotation. But they could only, I mean, they might step right into mayor. Because they're the highest ranking that hasn't yet been ma- vice mayor or mayor. And I thought, oh, are we okay with that?
You mean with an appointee being vice mayor?
If you had.
And then mayor once they're elected.
That, yeah.
That sounds fine, except they may not make it and then you.
No, they wouldn't be vice mayor. Because I thought you just said.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So um. But you might end up with the situation where you've been through everybody. Like the four people and now you have three new people. And instead of going back to the four to do the vice mayor and mayor, you go to the new people. And if one of them has already been. Vice mayor or mayor, they could become mayor. Without being the most recent vice mayor. That's why we had all kinds of diagrams on the whiteboard.
So I, I guess I have a few different thoughts and and one of them is I. I I understand what you're saying. But I feel like the skill set to govern is different from the skill set to get elected. Just because you've been elected doesn't mean you're gonna be a good mayor, right? It it. Or whatever that's worth, you know, and and similarly, there could be a scenario where. Someone who is appointed might have had extensive. Uh, service as in a- a- in an advisory capacity, for instance, right? So someone like a Robert Cox who has been. An advisory body member forever who could come in as vice mayor probably fairly easily. Um, and then there's also a scenario where. I I, if we're going to deny appointees the opportunity to serve in leadership, I would want to extend it to all appointees. Regardless of whether they've been elected before, because sometimes people who get elected get unelected by the voters for very good reasons, right? And there could be a scenario where a council didn't like that. Appoint someone who had lost and made that person their leader. Right? And that may not be in the best interest of the community either, right? Just because I I guess in my opinion, there's, you know, there. Stupid people get elected all the time. That doesn't mean they're going to be very good mayors, right? Yeah, I'm here. Um, so I I I don't, I I think if we're going to say that we want to reserve the privilege of leadership to someone who's been elected, that's okay. I wouldn't want to say just because you've been elected before means that you deserve the privilege of being in leadership again if you've been appointed to that position. Especially if we're taking away their ranking status, right? Because you've you've had a break. That was a lot of, that was a word salad.
I could agree with that. I I I do though think that once you're appointed and you're on council, you are in some sort of leadership position, even if you're not mayor.
Leadership of of the council, right?
Okay.
I I don't, personally, I I I'm not offended by an appointee becoming a vice mayor. That doesn't really bother me, especially I presumably the council has selected that person to be vice mayor because they think that person's capable. And if they really didn't think they were capable, they would say, we're going to change the the process. And appoint someone or elect someone who is more prepared to serve in that role than the appointees. You'd have to have some really bad actors on the council to say, we're going to appoint someone who's clearly not ready. To be a vice mayor or mayor to that role.
But we're selecting the vice mayor also partly based on the reputation. But we're selecting the vice mayor also partly based on the reputation, so it's not like we. Most of the time, the time I've been on council, it's not like we really scratched our heads and tried to figure out who should be the next vice mayor, we. We just pick the person according to the.
So we kinda did this last time, maybe you didn't know that.
What, scratch our heads?
Yeah, because as we read the policy, um, which is why we got the um. Email from the city attorney, um, saying there was different interpretations and.
Yes, last time, but that's why we're writing this down, so we don't have to scratch our heads so hard.
That's right, that's very true, yes.
It's gonna be impossible, though, to draft a policy that will address every single possible scenario.
That is very true.
The best we can.
So I will just briefly, I know we're running short on time, just so that the committee is aware, um. Putting in a requirement that the mayor and vice mayor be elected. Will result in some situations where a freshly elected individual is the only eligible person on the rotation list to be mayor and vice mayor. And that will occur anytime three or more members are elected in one election, so uh, just to be aware of that.
So you would have to ask yourself if what's more important is the fact that they were elected. Versus whether they've served time at all on council. Because you could say this only applies to those individuals who were elected. And then that would handle at least if you are wanting to address the appointed. Situation, but what Mateusz just described would would happen, actually, it would happen based on. The three, four. Three get elected, four get elected, three get elected, four get elected, so.
Which is, sorry, I was not as articulate, um, but yeah, that's what I was saying where. So it would be okay with me if that person was previously elected. Because then at least they went through a vote, but then as council member Ramirez said, you know, what if?
The voters don't want that person?
Yeah, exactly, but they, well, let's see, they got elected again because they wouldn't be appointed. So they clearly voted for them more than once and got them in.
It's the.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
This is a tough one.
Right.
Yeah.
Part of the, I I don't wanna pretend to know more than I really do, but I remember um, back when. Um, Larry Stone was on the Sunnyvale Council, he was part of this reform effort where there were a lot of folks who would resign at. Like a, this, apparently this was a common thing in Sunnyvale, they would they would resign sort of tactically to allow the council to appoint their friends. They just had this churn, and so that's why uh, uh, then council member Stone was part of the effort to amend the charter to. Uh, require a special election, I think in every case, and that's how they ended up with the Dave Widham. Doing like retire, he he left the council at just a spectacularly awful time. Because it required us a concurrent special election that was, you know, very expensive, where they could have just appointed someone for like five bucks, you know.
We have a solution.
Okay.
So to harmonize uh, both positions, uh, where we, the way we phrase it is that. A council appointee could be eligible on condition that they have not been recalled or not lost in the election.
There you go.
Oh, okay, do that. Can we run through where this leads us for the, for next year?
Um, if that is adopted, um. I think, uh, I think if I have the roster correct in my head, the next mayor would be.
Next mayor, I know.
But yes, the next mayor, the next vice mayor, I'm gonna need some help because I don't know all the seniority in my, in my person.
Right, so they. Talking about taking an appointee out, it would be the top vote, getting incoming elected individual.
It would be all, right, am I?
It would be what?
Ellen.
No, because she's already served, she's served.
Right.
In this consecutive span of time, so it would be the newest incoming person with the highest number of votes. Elected, who has not served, right, because.
Okay.
In twenty-four, you'll have four seats up.
Oh, you mean, yeah, no, I mean, who will be vice mayor?
Next year.
Next year, that's what I was asking.
So if Pat ascends to mayor.
If Pat is mayor, who would be vice mayor?
So it would be either the highest ranking who hasn't served, um. If, um.
Which I believe is one would be newly elected.
No, we don't have a election next year.
Yeah, we have one year before the election. Where Pat would, she doesn't think that, she would rotate into mayor.
So the other, the person who hasn't been either mayor or vice mayor is Emily Ramos. Um, and then the highest ranking would be, I think, me, yeah, because everybody else has been. Um, mayor or vice mayor, so we're circling back.
That's what I didn't understand, whether whether we're go, so you're higher ranking because you've had more consecutive days than. Ellen Luke.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, 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 and then in the group that was elected with me. I was the highest vote getter, so I have the highest ranking.
That's my other question, it's from your original election?
Original, yes.
And so if nobody liked you the second time around and you just barely scratched through, you still.
Okay, I just needed to.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so I think I'm okay with that, you know, I'm feeling like. Maybe the CPPC should discuss this again.
Yeah, I think we should.
You could, you could. Because it's, it is hard.
This has been useful, but I think we may have one more pass.
Yeah, so, um, I did have some other things, maybe what I should just do is, we end on time, is. For the next time, I would like the committee to think about, um, it would be two F. Um, which is if there's a vacancy for the mayor or the vice mayor, what do we do? This is very fuzzy, as I, as I would say. Um, so sorry, two F informal rotation, F, if there's a mayor or vice, or C becomes vacant. And think about whether or not you would want to um, define that more.
So this is like if I quit today, does Pat become mayor?
Yeah, okay, right, and we can talk about that next time.
I'd also be interested in what happens if um, the vice mayor is in uh, an election year and doesn't get elected. And you have no one ready to fill in for the mayor position in the, in the January of the following term. Another scenario that's not.
Well, that would have, it's less of being vice mayor. Not eligible to run again.
Well, yeah, so then that's. Right, there's a continuity.
So I think we said that, um.
You need this to go.
Yeah, we go back to the other.
The special.
Sorry, so we should talk about that similarly, so why don't we close this item for now? And we'll come back, continue, sorry.
Formal motion necessary, I move to continue the item.
Yes.
So I'll do a very, very brief, I will call, so, uh, committee member Hicks?
Yes.
Uh, committee member Ramirez?
Yes.
Yes.
So the second necessary for that motion.
So just, no, you're fine. So timing wise, we would probably be looking at August-ish, maybe August, early fall.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, 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 so, um, that would be, we continue item five point one, and can we do a quick, want to do a quick five point two?
We'll, we'll do very quick on on that item, because I know I know a bit of the essence, um. I thank you so much, Chair, I wanted to give a brief overview uh, to the committee of your items that you've accomplished for this fiscal year. So for this fiscal year, you've completed nine items, you continued one item today, uh, and then you'll receive an additional update today, so eleven for the fiscal year. They are highlighted for you on the first page of the memo. For the second page of the memo, we have the highlights of what you'll be anticipating uh, for the next fiscal year. There are four items, the item you've just continued here today, uh, which is the A six. In addition, there is a minor note which is uh, related to some feedback of a pending item. And we can take feedback on that here today, or uh, context or additional guidance can be offered by the full council. And that is a proposed uh, policy or addition, which is regarding a procedure for doing appointments to outside boards. Uh, our city attorney, uh, Jennifer Alogue, has advised that that needs some additional clarification. And so that clarification can be taken through our meeting here today, or it can also be taken through direction to the city manager or in open session by the council.
So I'm under the impression that, um, the city attorney wishes to have me counsel way in on uh, doing a referral.
That the full council would be, would wing in on, on doing a referral. I think she wanted some additional feedback on this item, I apologize, I thought Jennifer was also gonna be here today. Uh, but yes, I think, um, I think that would need to be clarified and um, for us to be able to place it on the work and get some additional detail.
Yes, yes.
So we should bring that up at the next council meeting? Uh, yeah.
Okay.
September?
Okay, great.
And then that concludes Steph's brief report, I'm also happy to answer any questions, as uh, the city manager McCarthy noted. We would be looking at an August or roughly September, uh, additional unit of decisions.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, so we have another meeting, so we will adjourn this one at two fifty-nine, and we have one minute to get to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, sorry.
Start there.